Do anything, I need a motion, Charlie Miplin, unfortunately he's not going to be with us tonight. He's here all the way back next time, he's acting chair, but a motion and a second and then a vote for me to be acting chair.
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You better not do.
All right, moving on, approval of January invoices. The right-hand chance to look at them. Any questions, comments?
I'll have a chance to look at them and kind of prove them, if you didn't see anything wrong, it'll be corrected or anything, maybe somebody will say it, but you're up or I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded, Mr. Smith, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion here. Approval of the February ninth, uh, agenda, um, everybody's had a chance to look over here. Any?
Agenda.
Uh, the agenda. Oh, excuse me, I skipped a minute. Okay. Approval of the minutes.
I'm moving very forward to the minute.
The January twelfth, twenty-three minutes?
Yep.
Okay, second, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion here. Now on to the agenda. We do have, uh, in the, under old business, two posthumance, the P D P twenty-two forty-four will apply equipment and ZMA twenty-two fifty-seven big highland, um, one island, there's a new business, the F S P twenty-two forty-seven, uh, Joanne Warner property, um, and then other business of text amendment, uh, on the already campgrounds, which is a public hearing, approval of the audit, um, and then the other discussion on previously the projects that we took items. Got a motion for approval?
So.
Mr. Charlie, thank you. Second.
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Okay, motion here. All right, um, I've already shared the items for postponement or withdrawal, um, there are no items on the consent agenda, unfortunately, um, so, moving on to that, um, the Joanne Warner property, uh, P D, uh, F S P twenty-two forty-seven, um, and it is a public hearing, correct?
No.
No, we're not, okay. Before we actually start this, is there anybody here to speak that has not signed in, anybody that's planning to speak on any of the items, sign in, everybody? Okay, um, anybody that is planning to speak at this point, if you could stand up and Mr. Parkinson will screen in.
Oh, don't keep standing, that's fine, rest if you just, that's all, no, I'm joking, I'm joking. Anybody's plans to speak?
Oh.
Do you swear a firm statement you make tonight with the truth or the best of your information and belief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Great, um, so this is F S P twenty-two twenty-two dash forty-seven, a final subdivision plat to subdivide one cluster lot from a larger farm measuring twenty-five point six acres, leaving a five acre cluster lot with one point four or five acres as the cluster lot, three point five five six as the preserve area and the remainder of, um, one hundred and twenty and some acres. Um, the property address sixty-one twenty-five Cincinnati Road and it's zoned A one agricultural with a surrounded A one agricultural zoning, Kit kind of ended that in a moment there. Um, as part of this, they are not proposing any new roads or new streets, um, they have access to water and sewer and there are four variances and waivers associated with this request, um, the first of which is to reduce the rear yard setback from a hundred feet to twenty-five feet, the second is to reduce the rear yard tree preservation easement from fifty feet to a hundred feet, and then the two waivers associated are the waiver to the requirement for new road construction for cluster lots, we'll get into that momentarily, and the waiver to the requirement for all cluster lots to have access to internal roads only. Just a quick kind of background here, um, the current zone is A one agricultural, however, um, tomorrow it will, if it hasn't been acted on by the fiscal court, it will be changing over to the A one, A five rural residential zoning subtype, and so, the staff report and the presentation have it noted as A one agricultural, but after that point, um, tomorrow it will be kind of floated over and everything. So this is the property here, the larger property is outlined in blue and then I've, I've zoomed in on the portion of the property that is kind of our subject for today. Um, the applicant is just proposing a, a one point four or five acre cluster lot with the remainder of about three point five acres, three point five five or so, and this is what kind of the general context is surrounding, so, it has direct access off of Cincinnati Pike, the farm is located at the intersection roughly of, of Biddle Pike, Double Culvert and Cincinnati Pike, just south of the, um, Porter Roads and Sadieville Road Interstate Access Point and south of the kind of a smaller agricultural five acre lot development. So this is our property here, we're going to kind of stick at this spot for a moment. You can see that the, um, cluster lot is located kind of along the frontage of Cincinnati Road and then behind it, kind of nearest to the existing farm is the preserve portion of the property, um, it's a very long property, they propose about, um, where was it in here? They propose a pretty large amount of road frontage and then it has a tapered width from about a hundred eighty-four feet to about zero feet, just kind of as you are traveling south on Cincinnati Road, it just kind of tapers down and the preserve kind of adjusts accordingly. There is one existing entrance on the property on the, um, PowerPoint, it's noted in the blue arrow, and as part of this subdivision, they've also, um, proposed an access easement on the north side noted in the orange arrow there, it would be a twenty foot wide, um, access easement only, that would kind of allow for activities to travel along it and access the property, surprise, surprise, that's the name. So, when we're kind of judging this project and everything, we're basing it off of the A five regulations for the zoning district and then the rural cluster regulations that are set forth in the county, um, we'll kind of, I like this one more. So, while there are a lot of regulations in it, in the staff report and in our presentation, I'm just going to kind of go over more specific information related to setbacks, preservation easement, um, some landscape buffering, infrastructure requirements, and just other kind of quick little things, the main one of which is kind of just discussing the setback requirements, so the A five has a fifty foot setback from property lines and then it's adjoining a non-A five zone parcel, it's a hundred foot yard setback with a fifty foot wide tree preservation easement, it's not very easy to see on the presentation, but on the, um, the eleven by seventeen included in the staff packet, it illustrates what the applicant is requesting, so, the property line is about a hundred, the proposed property line, the solid black line, is about fifty feet from the existing residence on the property, and within that they have the twenty foot, twenty-five foot wide, uh, rear yard setback and then, kind of in between that and the property line is a ten foot wide tree preservation easement. While we understand like wanting to have certain kind of controls and everything, when you're making a lot, we try to have as, make a lot that would be compliant without requiring these special variances with it, such as the one that is being requested right now. So, staff is, is cautious on approval of these variances as shown, just because you're making these lots, there's, you kind of can choose where they should go, you should be electing and, and proposing something that is in compliance instead of asking for something and then also having this kind of caveat of, oh, and also, I'm going to be requesting this additional accommodation for it. So, kind of staff is pretty cautious about approving that one and does not recommend approval, they're all, again, citing those same circumstances, um, the applicant's information with their zone change, they discussed how they wanted to retain as much ownership of a, a kind of drainage line that comes from the north to the south through the property, it kind of follows roughly the, the property line shape and just goes southbound, um, they're just concerned about protecting that, and while we understand trying to protect, um, key water areas in a, in the area, um, this stream is coming from surrounding other properties as well, so, it just doesn't really make sense to now have this now, or at least staff find, concludes that it's not really reasonable to kind of base it solely on the request of that stream, given that there's other kind of factors there and other people are impacting the stream, their uses are impacting the stream, and so, it, kind of using that as a reasoning seems a bit difficult. And so, staff does not recommend approval of that variance and instead would, if this was approved, would recommend that it would not be included and that they'd be required to adhere to the rear yard setback requirements as stated in the regulations. If staff, if the commission does consider an approval of the request, staff recommends having the tree preservation easement and the rear yard setback essentially overlap, which would therefore allow a sufficient amount of space to, when we get to the landscaping requirements for it, to plant the double row of, um, evergreens and deciduous trees as stated in the regulations. Next item kind of on our list is just talking about new road construction, which comes up with our waiver number three, um, pretty much just saying that it needs to serve the cost, the cluster development should be served by, new road construction should not be served by existing, um, driveways onto a public road. Staff believes that since it's a one lot cluster and it's a unique circumstance and that they, the entrance is already existing, that this request be, or that this requirement be waived, if they were in the future or another property owner or another owner of the, yeah, another owner of the property were interested in doing a cluster lot again, we would therefore then require them to adhere to the, the kind of regulations outlined in sections L and Y of the cluster regulations. Returning back to it, um, talking just very quickly about the landscaping buffer requirements, again, by having either the full-size thing that staff recommends, so the denial of the variances or the kind of five, twenty-five foot wide buffer area, that would be a sufficient amount of space to meet the landscaping requirements. The applicant is saying that there are some mature tree lines and we could kind of discuss from there, um, how things would end up looking, but at least in those areas that don't have a mature tree line, we would expect the plantings to be installed as required along the rear property lines where it adjoins the A one, the north and south one, which they also join A one, and then, um, the front property line specifically of, um, one tree every thirty, that would be planted along that area. Last thing, just in the staff report, just kind of talks about fencing, just saying that they would just need to fence in the property as required, applicant hasn't expressed anything against that requirement, and then just kind of a little bit talking about dwelling types, it's just, there are certain requirements on distance to fire stations and service areas and water provisions and mobile homes, and they are within a certain distance of the, um, Scott County Fire Department, so, they do meet that requirement. Besides that, staff has not found any other kind of regulation that needs to be explicitly pointed out or that may need an accommodation, just kind of going from there. Based on everything overall, staff does recommend approval of the subdivision plat, subject to approval of the two waivers, not the two variances related to the rear yard setback, so the waiver to new road construction requirement and that, um, cluster lots have access to internal roads only, so no driveways on new existing, and then there are eight conditions, the first four are on this page and the next four are here, um, just kind of talking about should that be, um, a cluster lot development be pursued later, they'd be required to adhere to the regulations set forth by the cluster regulations, that they install landscaping buffers as required, that they have, um, any new entrances, specifically the one on the north side have K Y T C approval, and that they need to, um, just note all the access easement, kind of who is able to use them and, and all those entities and, and otherwise for general clarity. But besides that, that's all I have for it.
Yes. Any questions for at least, from the commissioners? Mr. Charlie, you're pondering, you have questions or?
Yeah, I'm just.
Okay, all right.
No, I'm just becoming more.
Okay. Uh, is there someone here to speak on behalf of the development? Okay, can you state your name and address?
Michelle McCall, I'm Joanne.
I'm sorry, can you say again?
I'm sorry, Michelle McCall, I'm Joanne Warner's daughter.
Okay.
And, uh, I guess, uh, pretty much, I, I don't know if I need to recap everything to why we're doing this, my mom has the residence on the property, we actually do own a hundred and sixty-five acres, um, just a couple of the other parcels are separate next door to us, so a hundred and twenty-five is associated with this, uh, plot that we are in questioning, you know, so, re-subdividing it, whatever, and, uh, pretty much, we don't have a problem with most of the landscaping, any of that kind of stuff, but we are asking for the setback of a hundred feet to be less, and the reasoning for that is, one, I am certified with the state, um, on wat- water conservation, and you never want to, one of the requirements is fencing the property, if we go a hundred feet, we are within that buffer of that creek, the fence will literally be within five feet of the creek bank. No fence can withstand following the line of a creek bank, long-term, whether you do metal, wood, plus you don't want to put a fence that close to the creek for drainage issues, you know, that for backup, uh, trees, leaves, dirt. The other problem we have is, uh, as she said, we don't have complete control over the creek, I don't know anyone who really does, but the neighbors next to us are less than five acres, they are actually, um, two acres, I think it's two point two five, and they don't care for their property. So as trees, we have a water gap, which was recommended by the state to put in, which allows the fence to come up with the water flow, and since they don't take care of their property, we have trees, trash, everything you can imagine, it used to be a tire garage, so a lot of times we have tires come down the creek, and we are the ones responsible to go ahead and clean that up, keep it clean, we have cattle, so of course that is our main concern, is preserving not only the creek but keeping the water clean, since it does flow into Eagle Creek tributary. So, in doing the hundred foot setback, that takes away our ability to maintain that part of the creek and keep it clean. Anything washing from any of the property next door or properties north of us would then become the, if once we sell, when my mom needs to move in with us, it would then become the responsibility of this new property owner. One, I don't really like giving that control to someone else when I don't know, you know, possibly who would be taking over this property in the far future, but I feel like being certified with the state for water conservation, knowing fencing guidelines, everything else, doing the hundred foot setback would just be detrimental to more than one issue. Um, so I, I do kind of set forth, you know, that standpoint, we don't want to give on the hundred foot if possible, we are asking for any kind of variance, we don't mind doing a little bit more or less if it's possible, I can speak with my surveyor, but I believe when we did the fifty foot, uh, it would allow still for us to, to maintain, I believe it's around twenty foot from the middle of the creek to the setback, and it would allow us to of course mow, keep it, you know, keep the overflow clean and maintain overall the conditions of the, the waterway. Uh, other than that, the only other variance that I don't believe was mentioned is, we have no problem landscaping along twenty-five, there is a, already a heavy tree line to the north where we have the easement, twenty foot easement, and the only other thing I would then possibly ask for would be the fact of planting trees along a creek, I'm not really sure the benefit of that, it kind of would be like putting a fence, the same thing, putting a fence right along the creek would cause issues with stuff backing up, I'm not sure how well, unless I was putting in, you know, large trees, I'm not really sure how saplings or, you know, even a fifteen foot tree would withhold the water flow. So, in doing that landscaping requirement, we were going to ask for a variance along the side where the creek is. There are some trees already there that are aged, we don't plan on taking them out, we don't plan to do anything different, and I actually did kind of pull up, I don't know if I can pass my phone around since, um, there's no way for me to bring it up, but I did kind of pull up the GPS picture to kind of show you the overall landscape of the area around it, I don't know if I have permission to bring that to one of you, but...
Yeah, and we have, is it, uh, look, if you look behind you, is it?
Yeah.
Can you point it out there?
That's pretty much it, um, I mean, it's, show me here, this is our, actually part of our property right there where the, the trees are, but even the neighbors that you see next to us who are two acres, and then that next little area right there is a little less than five acres, uh, it joins actually a ten acre parcel, but none of them have a heavy tree presence, so to match our, I would choose the landscape around our area, uh, we were going to go ahead and landscape here just to make it presentable for anyone in the future, but I don't really see where adding the, the landscape fully around a parcel would be any different from the neighboring properties.
Any other concerns with the waivers or variances?
Um, I don't believe so, of course, we, we have no, there, mo- ninety percent of fence is already there, we just, where we have to move it back to go to the fifty foot variance, uh, or whatever's decided, that would be the only thing we need to move, the property's already fenced off, so that, that is no problem with us, where we run cattle, it makes sense, um, I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
No, it's okay.
But, uh, other than that, I, I, we have no problem in whatever's required, like I said, our, our long-term plan is just simply when my mom moves in, to be able to keep, I guess you'd say, control over how much land we own and who our neighbor is and how much they have control over. As it is, I, we can go down to a half an acre, I didn't think that was really something that would be a good choice, that's when we went ahead and added that pasture next to it to kind of give someone space to move out, you know, if they wanted a bigger yard or whatever, they do have a big yard to the left and right of the home, a fairly large yard in the front, it would just be the fifty foot around the back.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners?
And we, we did go ahead and fence, we planned the fence to move outward to allow a little bit more space and also, we mow three, four times a year and that would allow us to go ahead and keep it maintained, which would be another reason why we would really not want to put a lot of trees right there, because we weed eat and mow, I mean, I weed eat yearly probably, every time I weed eat, it's like fifty-two hours of weed eating, so I really, I would prefer not to have to go around trees with the bush hog and then also get out and weed eat around each tree. I think overall the land, the landscape would be more presentable without them along the creek.
Any comments, questions from the commissioners?
Something I like, everything about, if you, you're going to sell sometime down the road.
Down the road, yes.
I don't know that people already have any control of what comes down through regards, I mean, once you sell it, then people will feel like they own it, you can't tell them anything.
Yeah, on the creek or?
On the creek.
If, if we kept the fifty foot variance, they wouldn't own the creek at all, it would stay on our ownership, they wouldn't have any part to do with the creek, so we would maintain control. If we have to do more than sixty feet variant, I mean, more than sixty feet, then we would lose control around the house, I would not move the line to the, the north, but it would just, we wouldn't be able to get to that point, you know, go out and clean, clean up what is necessary, and that's a problem I've had, my neighbors don't clean anything, yeah, and I, like I said, I've welcomed you all to take a ride up there, that, I mean, we take pride in our property, and some people don't. And I know this is really different from most clusters, like we're not wanting to develop, it's just the guidelines we had to follow to be able to do this.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
I just want to make sure I've got this straight, Mike.
Sure.
Okay. So, what's in black is what we're talking about where if you were going to sell it off in the future.
We're talking about black on this one, right?
Exactly. It's not on there, it's on here, so it's on this, on the stuff, where you're going to have to go.
It's, it, I believe it's next.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what's in that, when you, when you do sell, whenever those, that day comes up, just be selling that part off.
Correct.
And you want to keep control of the creek, that way you can keep it mowed clear on both sides and like looking like it is now.
Yes, so we would just be selling, um, this, this is the line that I proposed.
Right.
This would allow a fifty foot setback, actually it's like sixty seven feet from that corner to here, it's a little bit more, uh, here it's just fifty feet, we're going to like move it out, and there's, like I said, there's a consistent fence, we would just have to move this part here, um, the reasoning for the shape is because I have the bush hog, and you don't want to have like tight corners to get into, so this would allow, other than of course going here, would allow me to go ahead and move to the bush hog all the way around, and we only do the fifty foot, that gives me enough, enough space to not get into the creek, which most, most states don't want you to do because they don't want you driving through a creek, so that would still allow me enough time to put or enough space to bush hog and maintain still to the left of the creek there, if we don't get the variance, the fence then will move.
Right to the edge, and then you couldn't, then you couldn't mow the other side of the creek at some time.
Correct, correct, so it would not be maintained.
And the fence would be like.
And my thoughts are, anyone who's going to be interested in purchasing this property is not going to have a bush hog and a tractor, so, my theory would be them be, um, they're probably not going to take a mower along the creek line and stuff like that, so, we're just trying to keep control over, at least maintaining this creek here, the stream is here, um, and this is just be, I believe it's, uh, hopefully has a twenty-five feet of a buffer to left and right.
Yep, and then if you'd have, you'd have to maneuver a tractor down in there to have this, very, if you had enough space.
Correct, yeah, so this would give me enough space, I have a fifty foot back angle, that would give me enough space, and that's why I said if, if you wanted me to move it to like sixty feet variance, it'd give them another ten feet and just take ten feet away from me and it'd get me down to the bare minimum space.
As long as you, for you, as long as you've got twenty feet from the edge of that creek bank up to.
Correct, yes, mine, my tractor tire and that one would be along the creek edge to get around, correct.
And you were also concerned about potential fence deterioration over time?
Yes, yes, uh, it doesn't happen often, but as you know, we had that, uh, recent flood, not long ago, what, about a month ago, three weeks ago, and it does rise, all the water comes down, you know, the hills, it comes down to that lower area, it never would pass that twenty-five variance, so, or the twenty-five, twenty-five feet from the middle of the creek, you know, if we don't move it any further, the water would never get up to the fence line. If we got closer to, closer to the creek, yes, every time it rains, it's going to be in water. And I mean, I could, I have four board fence, I like four board fence, it's a little more expensive, but I, I like the look, I like, you know, it's not a horse farm, but I kind of maintain that, that look on our farm, and I mean, I could go to metal post, but to me that just looks cheap, so, I'd like to keep the look of a four board fence, we own, um, two point, I think it's two point eight miles along twenty-five, and then we own actually the way our property down the road, I believe it's a little more than that, and we have four board fence along the whole perimeter, we are actually getting ready to go ahead and build another three thousand foot of fence soon, so, with this project, we were just going to get it all done together and I don't really want to accommodate metal posts if that's the look of the whole community. And that was one thing, actually, just to kind of give you the history, the property we bought next door was a hundred and ten acres, I sold off the woods of forty acres and that was one of my requirements in the sale, is that they had to keep the look of the community of four board fence, so. So.
Any other questions from the commissioners about that or the landscape buffer or anything else?
No, but I was just kind of curious. I guess, you know, the easement there at the north side of the property, I guess, you just intended to put a gate in there?
Um, yes, and actually, I have, uh, she knows. I've been trying to keep in contact with my surveyor, which has been very difficult. He's not very happy with this. We started this September twelfth. So, he's, he's kind of ready to quit at this point. But we actually asked that the easement extend the whole, even three and a half acres, you know, the whole five-acre northern line. And we were going to go ahead and, I was going to work with the state in putting what was required, a culvert in regards to how much water passes through. There's certain requirements where, with me being certified with the Conservation Office and the state, when you put a road over a creek, you have to follow all guidelines. So, I'll be contacting them if all of this is approved to find out what guidelines I need to follow, as in what size of culvert or how many, and what kind of base and everything over it. But that is one thing that he was supposed to do that I noticed was not submitted, is he was supposed to take that easement across the whole northern, northern line just for future confusion.
And I guess you won't be able to, you know, fence off that easement or anything. I guess you'll be, you know, in the future.
I will actually, uh, I will put, I'll have fence on both sides, and I will have the tree line landscape on the other side. So, it will be a double row of, um, landscape. So, it'll be going up and above basically, just to keep that look. And I will actually be probably doing like a gravel drive through there.
Yes, I mean, I guess right now, while as you know, in the family, so to speak, I guess if you, and Charlie may know more than me, I guess you could go ahead and kind of, you know, fence the inner edge, you know?
Yeah.
And I, I don't know, you know, that there, there may be legality of it that I don't know about. But then in the future, say if it's not in the family, then you kind of protect the easement.
Uh, it, we will have it recorded. I actually talked to Mike Stone with the highway, State, Kentucky State Highway Department. He has come out, he's measured it off. Uh, he told us exactly how we need to have the entrance and, um, he's the one who recommended the twenty-foot, uh, size. And, uh, with it being a recorded easement, uh, it basically is more for emergency use. We tend to have people go through a fence. And so, my idea was if for some reason I had to get to that part of the property quickly.
Without having to drive through.
We wouldn't have to go through five, six gates all the way around the whole hundred, thirty, twenty-five acres. We could go up twenty-five and cut through there. So, I would be putting in, uh, I was going to do a four-foot, uh, buffer, sixteen-foot gate with a four-foot four-board fence, and then have it fenced in to the left and right with gravel and have trees on the inside, uh, inside property line.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Elise or anybody from the planning staff, do you want to speak to the comments relative to the setback or the landscape buffer?
So.
Yeah.
This would be a, a kind of an amendment to the plat-.
I'm sorry, which, uh?
Oh, so, I'm just talking about the property line between the cluster lot and the preserve lot. Um, it's difficult to see on the eleven by seventeen, so I can pass around the full size as well. But, um, off the northeast corner of the existing residence, kind of by the letter S on the residence itself, it's measured about twenty-eight and nine inches, or twenty-eight point nine feet. Um, staff would be relatively amenable to, if we can adjust that property line to get up to fifty, to maybe consider reducing the setback requirement from a hundred to fifty, and then still keep that tree preservation easement as fifty. So, it would essentially just, overall, it would increase the tree preservation easement, uh, or the rear yard setback, and it would increase the tree preservation easement and reduce the number of variances that were being requested. So, essentially, I have it kind of roughly sketched here, if you guys want to see what I'm referencing.
Well, that would kind of match the angle of the other side of the house as well.
Yes, that would be the idea there I was thinking about and everything and noticed that. But essentially, just kind of round that edge part here specifically.
As I say, it's sixty-four, six on the other corner.
So, specifically here, it would round this portion instead of being at this location here, twenty-nine or twenty-eight point nine feet. It would just kind of extend it to fifty, and then it would match the side and that's, uh, the course of. And they, she's.
Agreed, okay, all right.
Literally, we just picked a fence post because we're trying to put it on a angle. So, it would just literally be moving probably another sixteen foot section next or.
Okay.
Or whatever, but we, we have no problem with that.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, any motion made would need to notate it. Um, I don't know if, you said you sketched it out?
Yeah, I have it roughly drawn out here. Pretty much what would be changing is the waiver for the tree preservation easement from fifty to ten would be removed.
Okay.
And then the adjusted waiver for the, um, rear yard setback would be a hundred to fifty.
So, the waiver for the tree preservation?
That one, so waiver or variance two on that list would be removed. And variance one would be amended from a hundred to fifty. Would be that generalized kind of adjustment.
Okay.
That would accommodate for that little bump out there.
Okay.
And it would, it would provide the necessary tree preservation easement area and be relatively straightforward. And then we would just work with the surveyor and coax him and all that fun stuff, right?
Okay. And then, on conditions of approval, number six, I think was a concern of yours as well? That could be impacted by, that was the landscape buffer specifically?
I mean, you can, you can come up and, it's this one here, just installing fencing in accordance with regulations.
Okay, yeah, the fencing, we would be moving to make sure it was on the correct property line. Like I said, about ninety percent of it's already fenced. It's just, uh, where it extends around the house, right now, the fence just goes straight. And so, we would be moving that part. There's already fence along twenty-five all the way down. There's already fence here, and then from that, that to the northern part, there's fence. So, that's all fencing already. The almost part of the fence we will have to change is here, and then whatever line you go ahead and, but on the date here, we would go ahead and need to change. But other than that, it's already four-board fence. And, uh, I believe the only other variance, other than the setback, was just not landscaping along that, um, this section here due to the waterway.
Right.
Other than that, we, we plant, we already have some tree line, so we can, I mean, the landscape along twenty-five, and then on the inside of the easement at the northern part.
Yeah, that was, I think, number six on the conditions of approval. Any additional comments or questions from the commissioners? Is there anybody else here to speak on behalf of or opposed to the development? Amen.
Well, don't you volunteer.
Sounds like you want to say something just to say something.
Yeah, I heard the raised voice, but not words yet.
I was worried when Mr. Solsky showed up, he might just be raising trouble. That's right, that's right. Get out your wallet, Mark.
As it is, we actually maintain our neighbor's property, so.
Okay. All right. With that said, I'll entertain a motion with the revisions discussed for S, FSP twenty-two-two forty-four. And I should have stated for the record when we started, actually, uh, of course, we have one vacancy currently, um, and Mr. Mifflin is absent tonight, so it was obvious in the discussion to make me acting chair. But just to state it for the record, we are technically down two in number tonight.
Six plus one?
Yeah. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve SSP, FSP twenty-two-two dash forty-seven with the amendments adjusted that were discussed.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I can make a suggestion, rather than us trying to work out the language to make the adjustments, I, I think we all have a pretty good idea of it, but the details of it, I think, really resides with these two folks.
Yes.
Uh, so, my suggestion is, uh, if they could work out the language, then I'll add that to the conditions of approval, uh, and then maybe we can get that signed in the morning.
Okay.
Rather than trying to get something that may be close and may be not so close.
Right.
So, our motion could be, uh, per the, amended, per the discussion?
Per the discussion and agreement we've just reached on the floor with, you know, the, the writing of it to be done in the morning, and then I, I can sign that in the morning. And that way, we'll have the approved conditions. They will know what they've got, staff will know, you know, what's coming.
Okay.
Uh, and we don't, because we've done that before, and sometimes if it's got too many things, this has got several moving parts. I'd just as soon not try to write that out right now and then maybe not have it written.
Right. So, you want to amend, adjust your motion, Mr. Garrett?
Well, I think you said as, as was just discussed, so, no, I, I think you nailed it. That's just as close as I would like to see it.
Perfect, you were the assistant attorney. Uh, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second, okay. Yeah, that's exactly right. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Uh, Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Best?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
All right. And the chair votes yes. Did I say two times?
No, he was.
Oh, okay. All right. Motion carries, and then we'll amend the language and sign in the morning. All right. Moving on, uh, the next item is a text amendment for the RV campgrounds, which is a public hearing. So, we'll open the public hearing. All right.
Thank you. Um, yeah, just, uh, a li- a little bit of background. Uh, a lot of what we're going to discuss with this text amendment is, is very similar to the text amendment we talked about on the same subject, uh, a couple of months ago. Um, the judge asked us to look at a couple of things. Um, so, just, I guess, as a brief over, very brief overview, um, some of the, some of the items, uh, were, were rearranged. Some of them were taken, uh, out of the A-one-R zoning district, and we moved them into that two-point-five-one-point-one section so that it applies to, uh, all RV campgrounds, not necessarily just those in that A-one-R, uh, R district. And then, um, the other ones I'll, I'll get to here in just a second. So, um, just a brief rundown on, on what is being proposed to be changed in the, uh, in the ordinance. Um, under the definition section, um, we're going to change mobile home camp to RV campground. Uh, I think it's a little bit clearer what we're talking about, whereas before, it wasn't quite as clear. Uh, and then change agricultural use recreation to include a definite, in the definition, that RV campgrounds of twenty acres or larger would be, would be in that definition. Um, section two-point-five-one-point-one is a subsection, uh, under, under our sort of mobile homes broader ordinance. Um, and so, I made some, there's some changes that are proposed in there to make some of the language consistent, uh, updating references, you know, to, to KRS one hundred, updating the, the language, where we made the change in the definition to mobile, to RV campgrounds from mobile home camps, things like that. Um, and then we s- um, we sort of clarified that RV campgrounds, sort of going forward, would only be allowed in the A-one-R zoning district. That's the, uh, agricultural recreation zoning district. Um, and then as a conditional use in the B-two zoning district. That's our highway commercial zoning district. Um, so, we would also eliminate language that would allow them, uh, as accessory uses in recreational areas. That was, uh, language in the ordinance that was never very clear about sort of how that was ever to be applied. Um, so, we just, we eliminated that language. Um, we made clarifications, um, about how much open space RV campgrounds should have. So, if you look through, I guess, sort of the existing language, um, on, on campgrounds in particular in our ordinance, um, there's, there's not very good guidance at all about, you know, what standards should be looked at when they're approved, um, how they should be developed, how they should look, you know, how, what, um, factors should be taken into consideration so that they, they fit in with, with development and uses that are surrounding it. So, that's mostly what we're looking to, to clarify and rectify with these text amendments. So, that's where, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, if a campground is established, it has adequate open space, you know, that there are setbacks from adjoining property lines. I mean, in, in general, setbacks wouldn't previously have really been applicable, uh, to these just because our setback, uh, regulations apply to things that are under roofs. And as, you know, mobile vehicles, it wouldn't have applied. You could have, in theory, parked them up along the property line, which certainly wouldn't be appropriate. Um, we clarified that, that gravel would not be used for these for developments inside the urban service boundary. Um, we require municipal, we would require municipal water service, uh, to them, uh, and, and adequate water flow and pressure for fire protection and that, you know, when the local fire department, uh, says that they need one, that the developer would be required to put hydrants in. Um, we would establish a density, which is something that we did not have. We didn't have any guidance as far as how many could be allowed on a property. So, um, looking at, uh, for public sewer, uh, we would be looking at about ten RV sites, uh, per gross acre, uh, when they could be served by public sewer. Uh, and then for those, uh, that would not be on public sewer, uh, we, we, and this is one that we amended from last time, but we, we sort of settled on, uh, one RV site per one-point-seven-five net acres. Um, and that, that follows the density that we have in our, um, zoning ordinance for, for cluster lots, like we were discussing, uh, earlier. Um, that's the smallest lot size you can have, um, when, when not served by, by public sanitary sewer. And, and as part of that, uh, research, I, I did reach out to Georgetown Municipal Water about the typical flows that they would expect, uh, in their regulations, uh, from an RV. Uh, and they, they shared with me, uh, that they are the same as, as what they would expect from a single-family residence. Now, um, they, they just had, uh, the Bluegrass RV campground, uh, here inside city limits, uh, approved, and that's, that's the expected flow rate that their engineers supplied to GMWS on that. Um, and then they, they did sort of share with me that they're, they are, they are considering, uh, lowering the amount of expected. I think, um, if I remember correctly, what he said was it's, right now, they have a standard of about four hundred gallons per day. Um, they do think that it's, it's probably in actuality, maybe slightly less, but, uh, he thinks if they did adjust it in the future, it would probably only be adjusted down to about three hundred gallons per day. Um, you know, as you, you all may or may not know, a lot of these units do still have, you know, showers and restrooms and, and things like that. So, there, it's not as though, you know, it's not like, uh, there's no water usage, I guess. Um, so, we just wanted to make sure that there was a density established. We use our, our current zoning ordinance, uh, for guidance. You know, that one-point-seven-five, uh, units or, yeah, net acres per unit is a standard that, that we had looked at with the health department when we established the cluster regs. So, you know, so there is some basis in our local regulations for, for settling on that number. Um, if you guys remember, um, when we had looked at it previously, we had just sort of established that it would be, uh, one per five acres, which is our, our A-one zoning density. So, this is, you know, a little bit of a, a change that would allow for, for some additional units in, in the rural parts of the county. Um, we made some clarifications that, you know, if there is other camping associated with tents or whatever, that that would count towards the density, uh, for a campground, right? You know, also, um, accommodations for, for caretakers have to be accounted for that's, uh, as far, as far as the maximum allowable density. Um, the judge wanted us to look at how many, how many accesses, uh, these, these types of sites would have. Um, and so, what we settled on is, uh, you know, for each, each hundred sites, there, there should be, there should be some sort of, uh, connection to, to a public road. Um, and that's, that's very similar to what we have in our, uh, in our subregs for our, for our neighborhoods. We want to make sure that there's, you know, the ability for, for these developments to handle traffic. Uh, we want to make sure that there's multiple ways in and out, you know, should there be an emergency and that, you know, you wouldn't necessarily be reliant on a single road, uh, for, for all the access to a site. Um, we also wanted to clarify that, you know, they have to comply with riparian, stream riparian buffer requirements. Um, we want, the judge wanted us to look at, uh, protecting the flood plain and making sure that, that any, uh, RV camp sites were out of the flood plain. Um, so, we, we looked at that and included that in, in our proposal. Um, and we also established that, that septic systems also have to be outside the flood plain. We don't want, you know, if there is, if there is, you know, um, a situation where there was, you know, heavy flooding or something like that, we would just want to make sure that, um, that our environmental, uh, sensitive, environmentally sensitive areas are protected. Sorry. Let's see if this will go on to the next slide. Okay, um, so, the, the, those, those are all under our, our section two-point-five-point-one. Okay, so, those are all under our section 2.5.1, that applies to all RV campgrounds. These ones would apply only to those ones in the A1R zoning districts, so if you have agricultural property and you would, you know, like to do a new campground, you would have to rezone to the A1R zoning district, you know, the public hearing that goes along with that, and then ultimately would go to fiscal court for that zone change hearing. We do specify in the regulations that it has to be at least 20 acres in size, so we didn't want it, you know, we didn't want somebody with, you know, a two-acre lot to try to put, you know, 20 RVs on the site. When I looked at some of the setbacks, and other buffering requirements that we have established, it seemed about 15 acres is really the bare minimum, like smallest, where you could get a reasonable number of RVs, and so we set the bar, just, I guess, slightly higher, just so that we would be sure that adjoining property owners might be safe, and so that's sort of where we came up with that 20-acre minimum for these types of developments in the county. So, once again, it reiterates that, sort of, the density, you know, RV campgrounds can have a greater density if, you know, if they're served by public sewer. It establishes, I think this was one of Charlie Mifflin's requests, that, you know, what types of adverse impacts should be looked at when these zone changes are reviewed, so, you know, noises, odors, light flashes, things like that should be considered. And then, it goes on to specify, and this is sort of very similar to our cluster regulations and the agricultural buffer regulations we talked about last month, you know, a six-foot no-climb fence around the border to protect both property owners, especially if these are in agricultural areas, and then a landscaping buffer to sort of provide screening between the uses. The last two sections that we made amendments to are really relatively small changes. In the C1, the Conservation District, and the B2 District, we just sort of made some changes to clarify language, sort of that change from mobile home camps to RV campgrounds, and then in the Conservation District, we specified that RV campgrounds are not a conditional use in that area. It does allow for some, you know, recreational uses in the C1 District, but we just wanted to make sure that that district in particular did not allow for development of this type, or really, most types, so C1 District is largely an area that we would reserve for floodplain. And that's a summary of what I have here in the text amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I had a couple of questions, I don't want to jump ahead of anybody. I talked to Joe briefly about them earlier today. I will preface all my comments with, I'm not a camper, and I know very little about RV campground, so, they sound naive or uninformed, that is why. As I had a chance between the workshop and today to review them, a couple of questions came up, and they were really both related to how applicable the cluster development reg, are we talking apples to apples when we're talking about applying the cluster development regulations here? What came up specifically was the, in my mind at least, was the 100 requirement, you know, 100 units and an entrance, and, it just so happened I had a luncheon today where I sat next to a gentleman, and it was, there were several people at the table, someone from Woodford County, and that Woodford County development came up, and the gentleman next to me had been involved in some RV developments, from an engineering standpoint, and I'd asked any background or information he had relative to the number of entrances per units and the density. Because one thought I had, it seemed logical, that probably the amount of traffic coming in and out of any development RV campground for campers is probably going to be less than any traffic coming in and out of a subdivision. Again, I'm not a camper, I would guess you go in, you park, you might go out to get groceries, but you're not in and out all day, taking kids to school, running errands, so of course the entrances have a part to do with the level of traffic, number of trips in and out, right? And then, as I talked to the judge about what his specific concern was here, he said it was emergency access, which makes perfect sense, you would still, regardless of whether we use a standard or another, you'd need to make sure you had access from an emergency perspective. So, that was the first question that came to mind, and then the other was related to the access to the public sewer. My impression is that generally RV campgrounds have a different type of septic system than public sewer. I don't know how it works, I don't pretend to know how it works, but I know that they dump into, almost like an individual septic tank, I believe, with, that's their unit is connected to, and then all filter maybe to a larger septic tank, perhaps? So, my question was, again, is this, is the 1.75, if you're not connected to public sewer, is it applicable here, as would be in the cluster regs, understanding that's the agreement we came to from the Health Department perspective, or is there an inherent difference in RV campground sanitation systems? And I don't know if that's a yes or no, that would mean we'd need to look at it differently. So, those were my two primary questions, and I don't know if you have any comments on either of those.
No.
Oh, can I ask, sorry, one more thing.
Yeah.
As I was talking to this person who had done some RV development through engineering perspective, he also mentioned on the entrance part, that in several of the RV campgrounds he's been involved in, while they obviously wanted to have enough entrances and exits to make sure they took care of emergency traffic, to some degree, they also looked to limit the number of entrances from public roads, because they found a correlation specifically with RV campgrounds to the number of entrances and an increase in crime, that perhaps RV campgrounds are more susceptible to crime than a neighborhood would be, whether it's because, you know, people don't have as much security on their campers, they leave equipment sitting outside, I don't know, those were just my hypothesis after talking, but it seemed a relevant point, obviously, we wouldn't want to do anything that would raise the risk level for crime if we were going into it unknowingly, so, sorry.
Yeah.
Those were my only comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you're talking about the sanitation, it's all going to be case-by-case basis, you know, depending on the density, the number of units, that at that point, say if they were on septic and not public sewer, then the Health Department, you know, and staff will determine what's appropriate.
Right.
So, I don't see, you know, an issue with sizing there, and, you know, then the ones that either hold and dump, or some sites are booked in directly to sewer, and as long as, you know, the flow is appropriate, again, be determined by Health Department and three development plans, et cetera. And you made a comment, something about, what was the 300 gallons a day?
That's, if, the comment was made to me that if GMWSS was to consider in the future a different flow rate from an RV, they would maybe consider 300, but not really any lower than that. They have not changed their rates that they would use in their calculations for how much flow to expect from different uses, but that was shared with me, that if they did change it in the future, they were maybe considering it in the future, but it would probably only be down to 300, it wouldn't, you know, be cut in half or anything like that.
For example, like, say if this is a establishment where a majority of your people, you know, holding the tank and then dumping it communal center on the way out, depending on how we just, there's usually tiers of different types of sites. You know, like a holding tank for a unit is usually about 30 gallons. And to your point about access, it seems to be best to have as few public access points as possible, because you're limiting the impact on flow of traffic through, you know, there's less, there's not three entrances and exits to dodge, you know, trailers coming in and out, and also, a lot of these places are set up on loop systems, so they're just sure. But I would imagine, and, you know, Ben could probably know more about emergency access, that as development plans are submitted, are you such, are you going to require secondary, maybe not necessarily public, emergency access, kind of like we do for other developments? Is that how that would work, like an easement of some sort?
No, if it's not required, or?
But you would require, at least, under this, you would require at least one entrance per 100 units, right?
Yeah.
To a public access point.
Yeah.
Well, that seems serviceable, I mean, you can fit a lot of units in a small space, pending, and then obviously to density requirements, I can see that being serviceable for.
Yeah, I just wonder if that was too much access, given the concern about increasing crime, and that the traffic is not going to be as heavy as a subdivision, I wouldn't think, right?
Well, it runs cyclical, like, a lot of, usually you have to book a minimum, you know, so everybody's in on Thursday, out on Sunday. And you, like you say, you know, the people that don't bring enough, I guess, most of your daily traffic would come from people living temporarily, working in places, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, you're there.
Yeah, which, where there's, there were some specific guidelines here that limited, from a seasonal, if you were doing it as a seasonal residence, and that changed even more, right?
Yes, yeah, I don't think, these are not intended to be permanent residences for folks. I will say, on the entrances, I mean, while it does require a certain number of accesses, I mean, they could certainly gate any and all of them to control, you know, who can enter from which points, which, I guess, would be, one thing I would add, it doesn't say that they all have to be open all the time, or anything like that.
Right.
How many RVs are there on Rogers Camp Road?
240.
240?
150, yes, sir.
Yeah, so, they would have to have at least two entrances.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the size of that, that, I mean, that is manageable.
Yeah.
But what if they had that extra 60?
Mm-hmm.
Now, suddenly, I mean, I would think three entrances might start, I don't know.
Yeah.
Come burdensome.
Yeah, but a little busy out on the road, and people, again, trying to go around and whatnot, but as you said, they don't necessarily have to be open all the time.
Yeah.
And maybe they'd open it well, but if they don't.
But you'd have to have the access points anyway, depending on what road front it you had.
I would say, I mean, if we wanted to amend it, we can, I mean, really, today, we're making a recommendation to fiscal court, we're not changing an ordinance today.
Yeah.
And this doesn't have that same sort of 90-day window that we have with the zone changes, because you all cannot change the ordinance sort of unilaterally.
Right.
So, yeah, if you want to change it, we can make a change in what we recommend to fiscal court, we could do that today.
That one is, and I forget the status of it, the RV place that's going to kind of go along Connector, back behind the dealership, but I think they had it worked out to where they would kind of accidentally have two accesses, right, because one would be from the business side and the other from Connector?
Yeah, they have one access on Connector Road and one access from 460.
Yeah, I just, you know, to Charlie and then to Paul, I kind of am worried, like, say if we run into an instance where it's something along Connector, then all of a sudden you're putting, you know, three access points onto Connector Road, or something similar, as we build out, or onto a rural road.
We could change some.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could change that to, you know, just a second access point after 100 units.
Or would that be something, if you put it in there as 100 and they came in for, and wanted something that could be waived?
I mean, that's an option as well.
So, even if we put 100 in there, it doesn't mean we couldn't waive it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but sometimes we have a history of holding to that pretty tight.
That's right.
Just speaking about.
But it does seem like Mary's point, I can't imagine they get out on the road anywhere near as often as a residence. I mean, we've talked about those before, what, eight trips a day or something?
It's about nine and a half, to tell.
Yeah, I can't imagine them making more than, you know, a couple of three.
At the most, and that's if they're going to the grocery a couple times, and, I mean, going to sightsee or whatever, right?
Yeah. Well, the secondary or tertiary, however many they end up having accesses, will probably only be serviced by either emergency, or oops, I need to go to the corner store, because usually these places have to check in, check out, just at the main entrance.
Yeah.
Most everybody's going to, that's going to service that.
Yeah.
And maybe they wouldn't open some of those unless people were checking out.
Yeah.
And went through a certain weight, you know, to.
Kind of how they own, here, they kind of.
I can see where it'd be a lot more secure with one less entrance, definitely.
Yeah.
I'd feel safer if it, I was.
And if we ever have, if we ever have a more than 300-unit RV campground, man, we're doing something right, I guess.
It's pretty good for tourism.
However, I did not realize there were 240 out there.
Yeah, it's pretty good for tourism.
It's surprising how much you.
But those wasn't there from the start, I don't think, because they added some on, didn't they?
Right.
Those weren't, when he built that, he didn't have the 240 operational from the start, I don't think.
No, no, he's got the.
Yeah, and since he sold it, I think the other guys added more lots, too, so, yeah, I mean, and those are just one, just one entrance up there, ain't it?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, is there?
Are they on public sewer?
I haven't been out there for a while.
So, how do we address that concern, like, say if somebody comes with us, to us with a development plan that only shows 99, you know, units, but they own a remainder, and then, but they're only, you know, required one access at the time, so I guess when they come back first, and then, then at that time, that would be part of the next development plan.
Yeah.
They would be grandfathered in.
And then, on your point about the density, my understanding of it, and you correct me if I'm wrong, unless there's public sewer access, what this would be doing is limiting the density to no more than one per 1.75, which essentially says, there's not going to be any RV parks, any place that there is not public sewer, because I can't imagine it would be financially feasible for somebody to have an RV campground that had a site on.
Not for temporary.
On 1.175 acres, it's just not going to be financially feasible. Just one second, we'll have public comment. Is that, am I interpreting it correctly? And is that our intent?
That is the density I'm proposing.
Yeah.
Just to keep it in line with, you know, other residential uses.
Yeah. With the cluster reg.
You could cluster those on site, so if you had 175 acres, you'd still do 100.
Yeah, they wouldn't necessarily have to be spaced out.
But it wouldn't have to be spaced like we did the barns.
And it is still quite a bit more dense than we would typically allow in the agricultural district, which is one per five acres.
Right. Do we have, I know Woodford County obviously isn't a benchmarking point necessarily, or Fayette County, or, do we have any other areas that have seen rather robust RV developments that we might compare to in terms of benchmarking what their regs are? Obviously, we want to protect ourselves, we obviously want to also make sure we don't prohibit any potential tourism that might come from it as well, so, what's the right sense? I don't know.
Yeah.
Just asking.
I mean, not that I'm aware of, I, yeah, I tried to base it, base it off of our current regs and previous discussions we'd had with the Health Department about the area, you need to serve, you know, a house with septic.
Right.
Those numbers come mainly from the Health Department, and that basis is what you're getting at.
Yeah, the Health Department and GMWSS, yeah.
Any other comments from the commissioners? If not, it looks like we have at least one person who wants to speak, any, if you could just state your name and address.
Sure. I am Andrew Hopewell, I am on Ironworks Pike. I have 140 acres on Ironworks Pike that we have been looking at developing an RV resort in the future. We just got this text amendment on Monday, and so I hadn't had time to review it, or hadn't had any time to make an argument. So, what I wanted to do today is, I just felt like this is very restrictive, and overly restrictive for an RV resort, and I think, in the future, Scott County will have a very hard time realizing the massive tax benefits of this bustling and rapidly growing industry. 49% of millennials plan on taking an RV trip this year. It is growing, it is trending to grow, glamping is supposed to grow at 13% year over year for the next 10 years. So, to your point, people want to get out, and they want to have memorable experiences, and so, they don't want to be inside the city limits, right? They want to go places, they want to see things, but they want to be in nature. So, we are requesting a postponement of this until I can bring in some professionals to talk about the affluent rates. We are proposing an onsite wastewater affluent system that is proven to be just as effective as a sanitary system from a public system, so we'd like to bring in those professionals and show them to you all, and so I'm just asking for a postponement of this meeting.
You said affluent system?
Affluent, just the sewage affluent. I know Matt said 400, possibly down to 300. We had some folks out with the state, got in Chris Edwards about a month ago, he did some whorings and testing on the site, and he actually said that he has done several of these systems across the state, and that what they are seeing and what they are realizing is about 115 gallons per day of affluent material out of an RV. I mean, I'm an RVer myself, I own an RV, my wife and I have been through 48 states and three Canadian provinces in an RV, and when you're kind of crammed up in a shower, you don't take long ones, so, I find it a little bit surprising that it's just as much as a single-family house, so.
Do you have any information on trip data or anything like that?
We do have that, and we can present that in a month, I just did not have time to bring in those professionals and actually show you that data, along with the sewer treatment folks as well, they're going to be coming out of Florida.
Any questions for Mr., I'm sorry.
Hopewell.
Hopewell?
Yes.
I agree with you 100%.
Okay.
You can barely, you can barely bathe your knee in an RV shower, much less.
Like I said, I'm not a camper nor a glamper, although glamping sounds better than camping. than camping.
My wife have one, too. Yeah, you're going to dump it once a day, even with six grandkids, you still, they don't want to take a bath in a camp.
No, they don't want to take a bath.
That's right.
Especially if they're boys, no offense to all the men here, but raising two boys, it's a battle sometimes, at least with the youngest. Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Anybody else? State your name and address, please.
Name's Roy Cornet. Address, Croft Street, 126 East Main Street. Here, I want to wear two hats. One, I've been on the tourism board locally for six, eight years, and we as tourism, we do anything we can to increase tourism in the county, city and county. There's a bed tax on short-term rentals, campgrounds, Airbnb's, which I've got, motels, 2% tax. The more we got in the tourism in the county, the better off we are. Take that off. I'm an old man, live here in Scott County. I've ridden my horses in 43 states. I am a camper. There is no comparison between the affluent sewer coming out of an RV and a house. It's just not there. I talked to Pat Jewett yesterday, he's got a big RV he keeps in Florida, he's a Roy. I put out 18 gallons a day. I asked Alexa this morning, this afternoon, before I left, Alexa says that the average residence does anywhere from 70 to 208 gallons a day, which--
What did you, how much?
70 to 200, is what Alexa said.
Alexa, what about, what is it called?
Maxed at 300.
200 or whatever? The artificial intelligence.
Personally, when I've got a big horse trailer, I, you know, I'd do less than 18 gallons a day. Long story short, there is no comparison between the amount of affluent coming out of a house and an RV. So, having said that, the 1.3 acre thing, that came from the cluster ordinance that was done 70 years ago, I was involved in, Charlie probably remembers me raising a cane. The Health Department came up with that ordinance, is a minimum lot size for a house, for a cluster deal with a five-acre density, with an acre and three-quarter minimum lot size, because that was enough room to put the septic system in and repair area, an acre and three-quarters for a house. We're not talking about an onsite septic system for a RV. We're talking about affluent going in the sewer line. If you're out in the county, it's going to go in some sort of onsite septic system. The horse park, for example, was on a sprinkler system for years before they got municipal sewer from Alexa. If you remember, the ones that lived here then, Charlie did, used to be sprinklers out there in that field beside the interstate, that was the sewer for it. It worked fine. There are things that the Health Park can do, or sewer, that will meet the needs of an RV. I talked to Gene Thomas today, and Gene, I talked to him at length, and he and I both agreed, it needs to be done on a case-by-case basis. For us to sit here and draw a rule up, use an acre and three-quarter ordinance, relay to RVs, it's just inappropriate. And that's the primary, the other thing came up, the fire protection. I think the six-inch line, you got to have for fire protection, minimum.
It depends on what you--
The point is, there's a lot of areas in the county that don't have six-inch lines, and therefore, putting a fire hydrant on is just a waste of time. And so, to require fire hydrants when they don't have that much municipal water in the area, that's getting parked for the horse. That's what I think that needs to be. But the rest of stuff, you know, traffic flow and all that kind of stuff, I've got no argument about it. The sewer thing, I just, it just, let me close by saying, my family has a large campground in North Florida. We've got 1,000 acres on Swanee River, 1,500 sites. There's one entrance. Yes, there's a backup entrance that we can use as needed, there's one entrance, and that is to maintain control of that campground. We've got an onsite package system, sewer system. The water is all comes from wells. In Florida, you got better aquifer down there, you know, wells right here's not going to work. But the sewer system, the aquifers down there are very sensitive, and they're very picky about their sewer systems, and that onsite package system works fine, they've been down there for 35 years. You call the Live Oak Mayor, or the Swanee County Mayor, the judge, they won't have anything bad to say about Spirit Way Music Park, because it's the largest employer in the county other than the school system. It's the largest electric user in the county besides the school system. It brings lots of revenue, and that 2% bed tax is huge to that community. And so, the more options we've got for bringing RVs in, I'm all for it, as a private citizen, tax-paying citizen, and as a tourism board member.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet. Anyone else want to comment? Any other comments from the commissioners?
I agree with some of the stuff we've presented here, and I think any offer, you know, to be provided, expert opinion, I think should be honored, as long as the rest of the board is in agreement. I think it's ill-advised for us to legislate on anything that we don't have a grasp of with, you know, just doing it on paper. Kind of like how we did a little more research with the Stillard Farms and whatnot. I think that's prudent, that the staff and the board would allow it.
Okay. I can close the--
No.
No, not--
Continue it to next month.
Continue it to next month?
Yeah, if we're going to allow--
I don't need a motion to do it, then?
No, I think you can just, we're just not going to close, not going to close, we're going to continue it to next month.
All right, so unless there's disagreement on that, then we'll plan to continue it till next month, and hopefully, Mr. Hopewell or anybody else that wants to bring any expert information, we would entertain that for sure. All right? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Moving on, then, we have the approval of audit, of the audit for FY 2122. Mr. Kane?
We presented the audit at the workshop. Craig McLavich from Charles Mitchell presented it and asked for any questions. I think we had a few questions. It was a clean audit. You know, we actually ran a surplus of about 41,000 for 2020, 2122, so it's 2122 fiscal year. So, I think roughly we took in 15,000 more in revenue than we had budgeted, and we spent 25,000 less than we budgeted, so, and there's no clean audit, no issues, no negative remarks. We just need a motion and a vote to accept the audit. If you have any questions, we can still bring Craig back, or, you know, get questions to him if you have any. Otherwise, I guess we'd just like a vote to accept the audit.
Yeah, motion, second, vote.
Motion to approve the audit?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the audit.
Okay, second by Mr. Stone. Okay. Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Best?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right.
All right.
Any other business?
No other business.
Then I will, I'll entertain, oh, sorry, I--
I'll--
We can come on up. Did you sign in?
Yes.
Okay. What, can you state your name and address?
Barry Loops, Sativille, Kentucky. Live on Indian Creek Road, been there for 29 years. Of course, I retired from Toyota. We liked the place we're at and everything, we stayed in there. We've noticed a lot, noticed a lot of growth in Scott County, number one county in the state, and that's not a bad thing. Being able to support that growth can lead to other things. I was wondering if the comment period on the subdivision on Biddle Pike, I was told that it was extended to this month.
It was. That was actually our, one of, our first agenda item that we had up.
I didn't hear.
Yeah, so we actually already voted on that to approve it. We'd made a couple of changes to what the recommendation was relative to the variance, and I think it's not, you might want to talk to one of the staff members, maybe Elise, after, and she can explain to you what it was, because it's not actually a subdivision per se, as it is a subdivided plat, but not--
Excuse me, I think he's talking about the Big Pine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was talking about--
It's on Biddle Pike.
No, okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's a big postpone for next month.
Postpone till next time. I thought you were, the other one has the Biddle connection, too, so that's why.
Oh.
Not too often that you have two things related to Biddle Pike.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, anyway, after 29 years, I noticed a lot of, a lot of that growth, even out my way.
Yeah.
I've got some notes here I prepared.
You might want to--
Actually, that was postponed another month.
Yeah.
We heard the next--
Yeah, so you might want to come to that meeting?
Yeah.